Good evening and welcome to the June 2024 Town of Poughkeepsie zoning board of appeals. If you would all please rise for the present reasons. Before we begin, I just ask for a moment of silence for an ex-member of the zoning board of appeals, R.C. Marlowe. She was a longtime member. She recently passed away. Just a moment of silence before we begin. Thank you. Welcome to the Town of Poughkeepsie zoning board of appeals. For anyone unfamiliar with the proceedings here, there's an agenda up here. Each item will be taken in the order that's on the agenda. The applicant will come forward, be sworn, describe what their application is, and maybe some questions from the board. The public is welcome to comment on the application. Also, this is a hybrid format, so people are available to come in person or also by Zoom. So with that, item number one on the agenda is splash car wash. At the request of the applicant, I'm moving to adjourn this to the July 8, 2024 meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Item two, the applicant there has requested an adjournment to the July 8 meeting, so I move that we adjourn it to the July 8 meeting.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Then that motion carries. Number three, that has been withdrawn. That brings us to item number four, shops at Campus Center, 1117 Maris Drive. Is there someone here for that application? All right, why don't you step forward?
Good evening. Is that good? My name's Brandon Petrella. I'm with Mori Architects. I'm here with the ownership group. Rona Bork and Jonathan Coser.
I don't recall if you two were sworn in last time.
I was. Rona was on the virtual meeting.
Okay, very good. Okay, then proceed.
Okay, I'm just gonna share my screen. Okay, very good. I think we're all familiar with the site as of our last meeting. So we are located north of Maris Drive. We're sandwiched in between Route 9 and North Road. We're a mercantile plaza. Here you'll see our latest site plan. No changes since our last meeting. We've done the internal reconfiguration to improve traffic, parking areas, and allow our facade renovations. Again, no changes since our last meeting. So we're here today seeking variances for signage and lighting. I'll start with the signage. Our major and highest priority variance is our monument signs for the plaza. As you'll see on the bottom of the page, there's three current monument signs at the site. Our intent is to remove all three. We are proposing two monument signs, one on the east side of the site, which is located here, just in front of the red cap, and one on the west, which is located at the pedestrian walkway across from Route 9 and directly across from Maris. I will call the Route 9 sign Monument A. Monument A, we are proposing to have 12 tenant panels. Each one is three square feet. And we're also proposing to have the digital display for the fuel pricing. Two fuel price displays. They are standardized. They will not flash. They will not change. They're gonna be whatever the price is for that day. I believe we have it set up for one for cash, one for credit. The other sign, located on the red cap side, is the same layout and same construction, except it omits the digital signs, which are each four square feet, so it's a little bit smaller. These signs are approximately 14 foot 6 inches for the Route 9 side, and the other side is... I can't see it because that's in my way. 13 feet approximately. Currently, the signs area, the signage on the Route 9, is 70.1 or 2 square feet. I don't remember off the top of my head. That sign is allowed to be 50 square feet per side. Both signs, both monument signs, are allowed to be 50 square feet per side. The one on red cap is 60.7 square feet. I apologize. The Route 9 one was 70.6. But what I would like to point out is, based on the way that the square footage is determined, the reality is, the red area is how square footage is determined by code. So that red outline that you see. But the shaded area, so our lettering and the signage panels themselves that each tenant will get, actually add up to just under 50 square feet. We designed it that way purposely to limit the actual signage that was on the monument to 50 square feet. It adds up to 49.3. I understand by the letter of the code, it is a little larger than that, but the actual area of sign is under the 50 square feet, and that's our largest sign. The other sign would then be reduced because it doesn't have the digital panels for the gas. On this next page, what you're seeing here is our proposed sign on the left and what a conforming sign at 50 square feet would look like. As you can see, it's significantly smaller. The tenant panels jumped down to just approximately 2 square feet. Just a little larger. The fuel price displays are under 3 square feet, as opposed to the 4. The LED digital lettering on the sign goes from 6 inches to 5 inches, and the campus shop lettering goes from 7 inches to just under 6. And the reason I point that out is, as we... We'll jump back here real quick. Based on the distances that this sign is viewed from, in the best-case scenario, even at these distances, these are best case, you can't actually turn into the plaza. So just coming from northbound, sitting at the light, you haven't traveled anywhere yet. You're approximately 170 feet away from this sign. As you'll see in some of the charts that I'll show you next, the minimum recommended sign by the United States Signage Council, when you're traveling under 35 miles per hour for an on-property sign, is approximately 9.3 inches in height, letter height. We're proposing around 6, which is their bare minimum readable amount for when you're approximately 200 feet away. So you can see what we're proposing today is kind of the bare minimum of what the USSG SEEP suggests. From the southbound side, when you're staring at the light here, you're about 100 feet away from that. And again, the minimum readable letter height from 100 feet, they say, is 3 inches. And again, it's the same thing when you're traveling a little under 35 miles per hour, is 9.3. And I have these charts right here for you. So you can see again, the United States Signage Council, under... Let me zoom in a little bit so we can see it better. Under 35 miles per hour, they assume that you need about eight seconds of reading time. You'll travel about 280 feet in that distance, and what they would recommend is, when you have, within that 280 feet, the letter should be 9.3. And as I mentioned, our best case, when we're stopped at the sign, we're 100, about half that. But as you're approaching the sign, which could be several, up to 300 feet away, you'd want to be 9.3. This chart down here talks about, again, this is based on general sign design standards. And the general sign design standard is, for every 10 feet that you're away from a sign, it should be an inch, the letter height. So going by that, you know, and again, that's for maximum impact. That's not legibility. That's maximum impact, and this is just for commercial signage, okay? This is not like a traffic signage recommendation. But being that we're about 100 and 180 feet away, you can see the recommended letter height for those distances is 10 and 18 inches, and we're just nowhere near that. You know, we're just trying to get a little bit of our information for each of our tenants out at the road, and we think 6 inches is the minimum letter. And the reason I brought that up is because by reducing our sign in scale to meet with the 50 square feet, you can see every single one of these signs would have letters that are under the 6 inches and just wouldn't be effective for what we're trying to occur on Route 9. I will move on to now the fuel station signage. I'd like to obviously touch on the fact that we know that this was put up by our tenant without our knowledge, and he was unaware of the requirements. That does not alleviate him of anything, but I would like the board to know that we are here asking for forgiveness for these signs. We understand they're there, and we'd like them to just listen to our points and let the board decide how they'd like to handle it. And we will obviously defer to your guidance. Again, we understand that he did this without, you know, previous permission. The first one is the canopy signage over the pump. The way the zoning code reads is that anything on the dispenser has to be attached to the dispenser and can't be any higher than the dispenser. There's no square footage, quantity, or location. The only point that I would say to this is the canopy is part of the dispenser. I know it is a little bit of a technicality, but this canopy does conceal the disconnects for the hoses for when somebody within their vehicle leaves the pump connected to their car. It is part of it. I do understand the intent of the code, but these do not project from the surface. There are decals that are applied, and they're very standard throughout most gas stations. I drove through the town and through a couple towns nearby. Most of the Valeros do have this style canopy. There are other styles of canopy, I will admit, but this style is prevalent in three locations that I saw. I did see an alternate one in Pleasant Valley. The next one that we're looking for a variance on is the digital display for the pricing on each pump. The portion that changes, the pricing itself, I would like to point out, is under the 1 square foot. And you know, the code does say that the digital lettering needs to be under the square foot. However, the sign itself is 2.7 square feet, but the actual digital display on it is 1, so it's under the 1 square foot. So I'd like the board hopefully to take that into consideration. The next one that we're looking for is the canopy signage. This one again has already been installed. The code allows 25% of the area of the canopy that the sign is mounted on to be the allowable signage. So on the south canopy, we have the V logo. On that section, the south canopy face is 120 square feet. 25% of that is 30 square feet. We're going, that icon is using 17.8 square feet of the area. Significantly a little more than half. As we go over here to the east, this is the large Valero sign. That sign is on a canopy face that's 184 square feet, and 25% of that is 46 square feet. So we're over by 10.6 square foot on that sign. Below this, you will see a conforming sign. So this sign below that you see here is a 46-square-foot sign. There is very little visual difference between the two. He came very close to achieving what he would have been compliant, but he did miss it. Again, unaware of it, but we would ask that the board consider the fact that there is very little visual difference between what is there today and what would be a complying sign. And finally, what is another one of the higher priority variances that we're seeking? Again, if I were to prioritize it, it would be the lighting, the monument sign, and then the fuel signage. This one is due to the New York State Safety Act. We have an ATM in one of our tenancies. 60 feet away from an ATM entrance, you need to maintain one-foot candle, 5 feet above grade. So in this area here, what we've done to... Currently, let me just point this out. Currently, the way that this is handled, I'm not sure if you guys have been to the site, there are three large floodlights positioned outward toward you. So the bulbs are shooting right out towards Maris Drive. They're high glare, and that's how they currently contend with this. What we are proposing is a series of wall packs, which will help in the area directly in front meet the higher requirements of the 1, the 2 and 5-foot candles near the building. The 60-foot, 1-foot candle requirement, however, is a little bit more difficult. What we did is we placed a pole light in the one small sliver of area that was not parking or movement that we felt we could get it on our property. Now, obviously, because we put that so close to our property line, because of these large DOT takings and a large portion of the parking area being off of the property line, we have light spillage that comes across the property. It's at its highest is 8.9-foot candles, where .2-foot candles is permitted. The reason I want to just point out how we got here, originally, this is before we even had taken the ATM into design consideration. This was our original design. You'll see in this bubbled area. You'll see foot handle levels 9.3, 10.4, 10.8, very high across the front of the building. We did this because we were trying to shoot light outward for this area that's parking and traveling. I mean, you can see how low it is in these parking areas, .1, .3. We had high volumes of light up at the front of the building because we were trying to illuminate so far from the building with wall packs only. And again, these wall packs are just the height of the building, so you know, we're in that 10 to 12 feet off the ground. So we weren't able to reach those levels that we needed to, for safety, out at the parking area, and have these lower. The county commented on that. So we went back to a redesign. When we went through that redesign, we also included the ATM design into it. So you'll see what we did is we actually cut almost these foot handles by half across the front of the building. So you'll see now, instead of 10s, we're down to 6s, 3s, 2s, 1s. But in doing that, obviously, that makes it more difficult to reach the 1-foot candle out here at the 60-foot mark. Now, again, we do have high lighting here directly under the pole light, but the throw pattern is very wide, and it has to be very strong to get all the way out to the corner. And you'll see in this bubbled area here, I know there's comments that the number is high by the pole and high at the 60-foot marker. It is, but it's only because it has to reach the worst-case scenario. Right where the wall packs are falling off, 60 feet to the west side of the site, I'm just making the 1-foot candle. This light was specifically designed, specifically picked, the throw pattern. We went through five iterations with our lighting designer picking this light. There are no other locations that we can put a pole light that would be on our property. If we did put one in this location, not only would this spillage still occur across this area, it wouldn't have the benefit of helping us in the parking areas and immediately adjacent to our egress. This is a DOT right away and next to a traveled road. I mean, this light spillage is actually beneficial for this location. And again, we don't have a choice. We have to meet. This is a New York state law. We have to meet it. And I think this is probably the best solution without having highly-powered LED lights shooting out from the building towards the street. And with that, that pretty much ends our presentation, and I'll take any questions you may have.
Can you go back to the monument signs and tell me, address them from Maris Drive? The site distance from Maris Drive?
The site distance from Maris Drive?
Yeah, you talked about the requirements for Route 9 and the site distance to the sign. So how about from Maris Drive?
From Maris Drive, you would be somewhere in like a 30 or 40-foot distance. So then, that point, you would still be in that like 3- to 4-inch letter size is what you would want. Now, it depends on how far back you are down Maris Drive. So as you're approaching up Maris Drive, you know, Maris Drive's length, I don't remember the length of the property off of the top of my head, but this portion from the corner just to the gas station is a little over 200 feet. So as you're coming up Maris Drive, it's still sort of the same 200-foot dimension that you're going to want to be able to make those decisions before you get to the site. I would argue the same thing sort of stands at North Road as it comes down. I think before you, you know, we're not gonna get much coming North Road south because this sign is a little bit more hidden. Again, because we positioned this sign, the existing sign, the existing Goodyear sign where there was a monument sign, was off our property to begin with. And two, there's just not a good location to have signage here. So when we relocated here, we understood that coming down North Road, we're gonna lose some visual having it here, but we're gonna get this entire corner of North Road. And again, within 300 feet of going south or coming north on North Road down the hill, this should give us some visibility.
And refresh my recollection, the storefronts have their own signs?
Correct.
And how big are they?
Storefronts are allowed to have, I believe it was 50 square feet each. And that's based on the length of the facade. So we reached the maximum, which was the 50 square feet for each one. Our point is, depending on where you're coming from, a lot of the signs can't be seen. I mean, especially Route 9. Route 9 is our biggest key. That's the one we're most concerned about. Route 9, I mean, you go south on Route 9, you barely see any of the signs. You come north, you'll see a few of Building A on the west side, but you certainly won't see any of the red cap or even, I mean, the gas station. You know, the gas station, obviously, it's important to get some signage out there on Route 9 that enables some people to at least enter the site.
And now going to the gas pumps. You have Valero on both the base of the pump and on the overhead. Typically, the coverage for the connections, are they typically... Is there something usually in front of those? Or are they typically open?
No, those are typically covered, but the valance is a very standard across most fuel pumps. Again, in all fairness, this valance is probably a little larger than some. But I will point out the zoning doesn't have a requirement on size on the pumps. But every gas station, and again, I drove around to most of the gas stations just so I was a little bit more eloquent about this. Every one of them has these valances, and most of them conceal the disconnect at the top. Some older gas stations don't. They just have a wrap right on top of where the disconnects are. But the valance is fairly standard.
Okay, and now to the gas pumps themselves, the displays. Do you have an illustration of what we comport?
I'm sorry?
Do you have an illustration that would meet our code?
I do not. I was, I didn't want to show something that we couldn't provide. So what they do have, what he has on there right now is a standard for that pump manufacturer. What I don't have is what options are available. So I didn't want to show anything that I wasn't sure we could get. So I do not have that option available for the board tonight.
Okay, that's all I have. Christine?
As far as the valances go, can you have something that still covers the, you know, what they're trying to cover without having all the lettering?
We absolutely could. I can, I'm not sure what the standards are, but I imagine these are just a vinyl wrap on a metal face. We'd have to speak to them. They could probably rewrap them, or if there's other options. Again, the valance is just a metal piece that has a vinyl wrap on it, so.
Thank you.
Winter? Could you show me exactly where the Route 9 sign is gonna be?
Yes. This is the Route 9 sign, right here.
So it's actually behind the light pole?
Yeah, the light pole is well off of our property here. So currently, this parking area, the pavement, actually runs out to about here. So this sign is kind of in that paved area right now.
And you're gonna have a two-sided sign, so it's gonna have the prices on both sides?
Correct.
Illuminated? Okay. So now if you go over to the pumps. Go back to your pump.
Oh, the actual drawings, sure.
Yeah. These pumps, these pumps are very busy. You've got Valero down at the bottom. You've got Valero at the top. You've got Valero on the sides. It's a little busy. So as Christine said, if we could, to me, it'd be more palatable if we could get rid of that big Valero cap. I mean, that's...
I think we would be willing...
That just kind of jumps out and...
Yeah, I think that's a very reasonable request. I think, would the board be okay if we kept the colors as long as the Valero was gone? It would just be the blue and the white stripe?
I don't think we can do anything about color, can we? Just that it's so bright, it's offensive.
I think that's branding. I don't think that gets away from the branding. It's quite clear that it just matches the Valero on the top. So I think that, I think that the board would be interested in that going away.
Like white or something, yeah.
I think we could minimize that to something the board, I mean, just plain white? Or would you like to see the blue? Is there any preference?
White would be nice.
White?
And then drop down to where your LED sign is?
Yep.
Cash, blah, blah, blah. So that's not gonna change either?
That does change, cash, credit.
I don't believe we can.
I think it has to, by New York state law. That has to change.
You have to show both. You have to show both, but our code prohibits electronic signs from changing?
Many have it where it says cash or credit across the top, and nothing changes.
Okay, I'll have to look into that. If that's the code, then that's what...
There's a lot of pumps around that don't flash.
Would that be your interpretation?
I mean...
Yeah, I mean, I'd wanna just double-check and...
I think generally we don't take flashing electronic signs. I think those are prohibited.
Okay, so the next thing would be your canopy. That has the one large V and the very large Valero. Now can they, Kristen, can they have the V and the Valero on the same canopy?
We're permitted two.
Uh, yeah, that's correct. They're permitted two, but they cannot exceed the 25%.
All right, so the only choice there would be a smaller lettering?
Yeah, the one below, the one on the bottom, is completely compliant.
Okay, I think I'm done for now. Thank you.
Charles?
The sign on Route 9, that has to have the price for the gas?
We're permitted one gas sign. We would like it on the Route 9 side, yes. Now, the signs, the size of those digital signs is in compliance with what's allowed. Them specifically, those LEDs.
If you do that, the big sign that's there now is gonna come down?
Oh, yeah. Those three signs that you see to... Oh, yeah. Those three signs that you see today are all gone. We're only proposing these two. Yeah, that one's gone. Yeah, we, we will only have the one pricing sign out at Route 9.
The one on Route 9 is really not for the people going north, is it?
It's for both.
Well, but.
It's the, I mean, it's not our best-case scenario because in order to even come into that site, you have to make that decision hundreds of feet before our site.
Before the sign.
Which, that's why we really want this sign out there to be visible. That's why the six-inch lettering is imperative to us to see that digital display, and that's why it's at the top, to drive that, that canopy.
Is there going to be another entrance going north off of Route 9 into that shopping plaza?
There will not be. It is something that we've talked about having an exit from, uh, onto Route 9 north. Um, but again, this is, that's a long ways away, that conversation with DOT. I mean, it, I can't promise you it'll ever occur, and if it does, it'll be years.
I, I don't. Okay, I have no other questions at this point.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No more questions.
Go ahead.
So the sign on the ca, the canopy Valero, there's also going to be a sign on the building too, correct?
There can be, yes.
So that, that was what we talked about last time, was each tenant's going to have, I think you said it was 50 feet? So we'll have one on the canopy on the, over the pumps and one in the building as well.
Yeah, but I don't necessarily know that that sign would be devoted to Valero. That would probably be for the deli. I don't know that. I can't, again, promise that, but I wouldn't see that value.
Valero is also the deli, right?
No. Well, Valero is their fueling, but I think he's, what's his actual?
Yeah, I think they call themselves Marist Mart. So chances are, it would, it's formerly known as Campus Deli. So he would have a Marist Mart sign on the convenience store because that's what it is. But Valero is just the, is the franchise that sells them the fuel.
So it wouldn't have Valero on the building?
No, no, we, we don't plan to have Valero on the building in any capacity.
And we can even make that a condition, if that's something that you'd like to see to make sure it doesn't say Valero on the building. Again, I mean, if you look at most gas stations that have, uh, you know, a, a, a something inside of it, it's normally the deli or the Dunkin' Donuts or something is the signage on the building. The canopy and the branding for the fuel is out at the pumps in the canopy.
And then can you go back to the lighting slide with the, the dome?
Which section do you want to see?
I think it was the next slide, or was that one zoomed in on the right? So you had said the only place to put it was on that marionette, that little tiny piece there?
Yeah, so this is the best location that allows us to meet this 60-foot.
So in order, because it's what, 13.3 there?
Yes.
Um, and that is really to get to the one?
Correct.
Did you talk about potentially like taking like the third spot in parking space and creating a marionette and having it more centralized? And, and diminishing the amount on the, um, the external over here?
If we, uh, well, the reason we like this one, one, is it, we don't lose an additional parking spot. Um, we're, you know, I think we're kind of where we want to be as far as parking. I don't want to diminish it too much. Two, this also protects, protects the parking because again, this is our, our egress right here. So it kind of, there's no curbing or no protection right now. It helps define that edge. We would, if we did put this one here, I think, yes, I may be able to reduce the, uh, the output of this, but I don't think it would actually reduce the variance that I need. If, if anything, this, again, this point, 13.3, you can see how far away it is from the property line because this light is this far away. If I put this light here, it's going to be now closer to the property line and my hotspot's still going to be even closer to the property line. And I can't tell you, I can't confirm, but I would imagine the variance we would require would still be significant. It would still be in that eight-to-seven-foot candle.
Okay, that's the question. Thank you.
Audience?
Uh, nothing.
All right, anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this application? All right, could you unshare your screen?
Anyone on Zoom who wishes to speak to this one?
Yes.
Go ahead. Could you go back to your, your lighting screen, please?
Absolutely.
The dotted line, that heavy black, is that your property line?
This heavy dotted line is the property line. Yes.
So these are not parking spaces that we see here?
They are parking spaces that are currently on the DOT's right-of-way. You can see how limited we are in trying to light them, comply with the code. I mean, there's several significant issues with this site.
This is more of a question for our zoning administrator, I believe. Would they be allowed to put a light on the back of their pylon sign to shine into that section of the parking lot? To help offset that dark spot? And that wouldn't be visible from Route 9?
I.
If it, if it, you know, if it's shown inward toward the plaza?
You want a, a, a light on the sign, on?
You know, on their pedestal?
Yep.
So I'm just grasping at straws here to help them light that, maybe diminish this other one. If they added a, some kind of a pack on the back of that pole facing the plaza, is that something that they could do and possibly offset the lighting problem that we were talking about on the other side?
Possibly. I would still need to see what the illumination is.
Right, but it may, it may help, but it would also throw extra lighting at that far corner where there's, there's so, there's so much concern.
So I will, just to address this, and we obviously didn't try that exact location, but we did try, uh, an, um, lighting pattern where I had this reduced and I had a secondary pole light here to get the forward throw here. That forward throw would come across and it actually makes these foot candles all across this portion, seven-to-six-foot candles as well. So we felt like this was the lowest impact across the property line. Now, moving this light up here may reduce that amount, but again, you're trying to throw this, you know, 40 feet to this point and you're reducing this. So, you know, you can see at this area here, we really are just hitting that one-foot candle at five feet. But we did look at two fixtures. It wasn't, we, again, we went through multiple, uh, iterations with our lighting designer on this.
Okay, thank you.
Paul? Could I add another? The parking spaces that are outside of your property, are they vanishing? What's happening to them?
They're existing and they intend to remain existing.
Remain as part of.
Yep.
You talked about the, the gas pump. And do you think that there are some other alternatives to the size of the gas pump or the configuration of the gas pump?
I will look into it. I cannot, I don't know the answer to that. I know this is the standard one with this manufacturer. I can tell you, I did see them at other Valeros, the exact same size. Not that that makes it okay, but, um, this is, I can't say that, they're also fairly common in size across different, um, brandings.
All right, how, how are you going to address the cash credit?
I think what we'll have to do is discuss it with them and say that, you know, if we have to have a non-changing one, uh, then we have to figure out how they can be programmed. Uh, if it can't, I didn't re, I, I guess my interpretation was that didn't, that section of the code didn't apply to these particular ones, but if it does, then he'll have to address it. Um, it's our standpoint that they weren't put in correctly. And if things need to be changed in order to make sure that we get some of the other things that are higher priority for the plaza, then that's what we need to do. So I think we're open to changing the valances to the white. I think we're open to looking into at least smaller digital displays, if that's what the board would like to see. The only one that I kind of do ask that the board consider is, you know, on that canopy, that Valero, that sign is up and there is such a minimal distinction between what is compliant and what he put up there today that I would ask that we maybe don't have to put our tenant through the cost of changing it for something that wouldn't be of much significance. But the other ones, uh, they are what they are.
Okay, so in that case, I'm going to suggest that we keep the, the hearing open. I'm going to ask you to come back with some, if you have some alternatives for the gas pump sign. And then, because I still want to keep all these together. I don't want it to be piecemeal. Is that a problem?
As, yeah, uh, we're trying to move, uh, the owner is under a financial restraint to complete construction. They have funds that they need to spend this year. What's important, the only reason I bring that up is our site plan approval is contingent upon only one of these variances, and that's the variance for the lighting. In order for us to move forward with site plan approval and building permit, delaying another month does make construction difficult. Is there any option to separate out that one and perhaps?
Just the lighting?
Just the lighting. We will contend all other signage till the next meeting. Are we happy with that?
I mean, if, if it's not too bold to, to ask, if we can do the monuments, if we can have a decision on the monument sign position and the lights, the light, uh, pole for this meeting, that would be God-sent for us. You, I, I would be happy to talk to you offline about the pain that we're going through, but if, if we understand the gas station situation is not ideal and it was not our intent to have this happen at all, especially knowing that we were going before the planning board, the zoning board, and making everything we're doing comply with code. We didn't expect this to happen. This was not on our, our plan. Um, so if it's, if it's at all possible to have you do the monument signs and the light separately, that would be a huge, huge plus for us. If you, if you can't and you can only give us the lighting, we'd be thankful for that too. But if you could separate our, our two issues, that would be amazing for us. And then we're happy to, to comply with you in any way we can for the gas station.
All right, if you could unshare your screen? Lisa? Would I just keep the, the public hearing open, but just vote on those two items?
Right.
Okay.
We don't have to close the hearing on those two items?
If you're, technically, if you, it would be, you know, if you want to move to close on those, the items that you're going to make decisions on tonight and then keep the other one open, um, and then make decisions.
All right.
It's probably the cleanest way to do it. I don't know if it's the absolute necessary way to do it.
Okay. All right, in that case then, I move to close the public hearing on items one and four of this application.
Second?
Is that correct, Lisa?
Yes.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say go by aye?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? And that motion carries. In, in that case, I move to adjourn, or I move to, you know, keep the rest of it open and move it to the July 8th meeting.
Thank you very much.
All those in favor, say go by aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Then that motion carries. And so you're going to provide something about the?
Yeah, so you're looking for more information on the digital signs on the pumps and how we'll handle those being static priced?
Correct.
Absolutely. Thank you so much for your time. Thanks again.
That brings us to item number five, 206 Roethdell Road. Does this someone hear from that application? Yeah. Can you state your name?
Richard Chapman, Chapman Construction. I'm the builder on the site.
Fred Gerst, all right.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes. All right, why don't you describe your application?
Um, so we are seeking a variance for a deck. Uh, it's 22 by 12. Um, it's just a residential homeowner, personal use for him and his wife and his dog. Um, it looks like we are two feet short of the rear setback. We are at 28 feet, um, which obviously we need 30 feet. So that's kind of where we're at. We recently just did a 18-by-16-foot addition off the house, uh, which I guess didn't need a variance. Um, so now we came here and did a, a deck that we applied for a permit. Now we're just looking to get the, the deck done.
Okay, and that would, is that what brought you here when you applied for the permit?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right. Uh, is it fair to say that the, the closest the new deck will be to the, to the rear yard line is, is less than the, is farther away than the rest of the houses? Is that correct?
Yes, by far, yeah, by far.
Okay, are there any questions? Christine?
No questions.
All right.
No questions.
Charles?
No questions.
Larry?
No questions.
Tony?
No questions.
Linda? Tony? All right, anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this application? I don't see anyone. Anyone on, on Zoom that wishes to comment on this? Okay, then I just have a question for our attorney or the zoning administrator. I see that section 135, 135 describes that. Do we need a variance because it's increasing the non-conformity of the, of the lot?
That was something that was included in the denial letter by the zoning administrator. Um, the house is non-conforming and I guess the deck is increasing the non-conformity technically of the setback of the house, even though it's, um, further back. So it, it was cited as a need for a variance. I would see it.
Okay. All right, and, all right. Then I'll move to close the public hearing on item number five.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say go by aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. And you can either wait till the end of the meeting or you can call the zoning administrator in the morning for a decision.
Okay.
Okay?
All right, thank you, sir.
Okay. That brings us to item number six, 7 Sherwood Drive. Can you state your names?
Brian Lee.
And I'm Carol Mastriani.
How do you do?
I live at number five Sherwood Drive.
Okay, would you mind removing your hat?
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
Yes.
All right, why don't you describe your application?
Uh, I recently purchased this home. Um, there's an existing deck in the back. I'm just looking to bring it up to legal standing. It requires a variance because of the, uh, because of the distance to the side property, which would be Carol's. Uh, so that's where we're at.
Okay, included in your application, are, are plans, architectural drawings for a deck? Is that the old deck or a new deck?
It's the existing deck. They, there is no permit when it was built, um, you know, 30-something years ago. So, um, we had to treat it as if it's new structure. Um, so, and we do have to, you know, there is some improvements that need to be done to it, uh, just to increase its stability. But, um, yeah, so those, those plans, that's, those plans are the existing deck.
And on behalf of Brian, I have to say that I grew up at number five Sherwood Drive. So I've been there my whole life. Um, I know, I have known all four neighbors that lived in the house where Brian lives now. That deck has been there since I was a child. Um, which brings me to ask the question, how does, how does a resident know when these zoning setbacks get changed? Because the deck was there. Now, all of a sudden, it needs more of a setback. How do we as homeowners get this information? Is it only when we apply to do something to our homes?
That, that's certainly one way to find out about it, although the codes are available to review. But let me ask you this, how, how did you come here today? What brought you here today?
Uh, I had a plot, so the, the home that I purchased, there's, there are multiple permits that were never, you know, either never taken out or were never closed. Um, the type of loan that I purchased the home with is a renovation loan because those things need to be closed out. One of those was, uh, one of the, one of the concerns was, was the deck.
So the title company picked up on this or the mortgage?
In discussions, yeah, about, about the home and what, I had to, you know, I have a contractor who had to, um, be involved and sign off on it and, and do an inspection and then, um, a couple of guys from the town came in and did an inspection of it. Um, so we submitted plans based on what we were told we needed to do, uh, right? We needed drawings of the existing deck with, um, like for instance, when it was built, it was built with four-by-four posts. Uh, by today's code, it needs to be six-by-six. There are significantly more four-by-four posts than are necessary, right? So structurally, it was, it held up, right? But it doesn't meet today's code. So that's like where some of those little changes come in in the drawings. So that's like where some of those little changes come in in the drawings.
Are you replacing the deck?
I'm sorry.
Are you replacing the deck?
No. No, I'm looking to keep the deck how it is and just do the improvements I needed to, I need to do to bring up to today's code. So when I came to the town to submit the, for the permit, it was brought to my attention by one of the gentlemen from the town that the distance from the property line was, it was too close to the property line. When it was built, it might not have been, but it is now.
Christine?
No questions.
All right.
No questions.
Phyllis?
I have no questions.
Larry?
No questions.
Tony?
No questions.
Linda?
No questions.
Just to clarify something, looking at your, at your diagram on the, at the last page, are you going to be like upgrading these posts one at a time? You mentioned that they originally four by four and now six by six. There's a notation that says no existing footings, all footings, 14 inch by 42 inches, do you?
Yeah, so they had originally built it on a, they had poured a cement platform, and then the posts were resting on the platform. So, yeah, we're going to have to, we have to dig down and put sonotubes and, you know, and foot, and foot those, and foot the posts. The hope is to, yeah, to, we're going to have to do it in pieces, yes, in order to keep the existing deck up. Right, so we'll have to do, whether it be by row by row with added support or what may it be, but, yeah.
Okay, so you're going to keep the deck in its current configuration?
Yeah, yeah.
You have to kind of rebuild it as you go, is that?
The decking on itself is staying exactly, is exactly the same. The railings are going to be replaced because they're, they're not in compliance either, right? They, they had built it with cross-sections as opposed to, so they're not, so they don't meet like the, what is it, four inch spacing? So like that needs to be replaced. That's on the drawing. And then, like I said, with the, with the posts, they had used four by fours, they need to be six by sixes. So we have to replace, we got to replace those.
Right, and you had a notation that there was a, a beam that was two by eight, which should have been replaced with a double two by 12?
Yeah, just for action, yeah, for added support.
Okay, so you're just going to go section by section doing all this stuff?
Yeah.
Would you like to do?
Anyone for the public who wish to come in on this application? I don't see anyone in the building. Anyone on Zoom? All right, I don't see anyone, so I'll move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say goodbye, aye?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? And that motion carries. And again, you can wait till the end of the evening or check with the zoning administrator on why.
Okay, great. Thank you, guys.
That brings us to item number seven, 231 North Road. Does someone hear from that application?
Good evening.
Hello. Just state your names.
Natalie Quinn with KARC.
And Kelly Leibert with KARC.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
I do.
I do.
All right, why don't you describe this application for interpretation?
Great, I'll just share my screen. All right, so the property that we're discussing tonight is 231 North Road, and we are seeking a zoning interpretation and just some clarification on a letter that we received on April 15th of this year. So the, the property 231 North Road is, you know, it's a one acre site. This is right by Westchester Medical, Palistiner, Mike Ortega's, it's right there. This property, which is kind of highlighted in red in the bottom, does span two zoning districts itself. A portion of it is in the IN district, and then another portion is in the R20 district, and those are separated by a paper road. And so on this site, on this portion, on the R20 portion of this site, we are looking to develop a 22 space parking facility to serve the immediately adjacent lot, which will become part of this lot, right? This is a proposed consolidation plan. So what is next to it is, in the city of Poughkeepsie, in the R2 zoning district, is Bambini Pediatrics. So this is one of the last pediatric, or one of the only pediatric facilities kind of within the area. And they would like to purchase this property that they, so that their offices are on property that they own, but they require more parking for their employees. Right now, the lot is a little bit tight with the employees as well as patients. So they're looking to kind of develop this accessory lot of 22 spaces that will be employee only. So what was submitted was a lot line consolidation plan, right, of merging these two lots together across the municipal boundary, so that they are all on the same lot. And that, so then that parking facility would be, would again, serve the existing facility on site. So here's just some kind of aerial photos of it. The proposed site right now, the, the site that is in the town of Poughkeepsie is largely vacant. There's about 555 square feet that is used by billboards that have been there since the 1950s, that will remain on site. The remainder of the site is, is treed with some rock outcroppings as well. And as you can see from these images, it is surrounded by medical offices, the hospital, and parking facilities that serve those uses. So I'm, this is just a photo of the zoning interpretation, which, or the zoning decision, which I believe you have received. So there's just two points today that we're seeking clarification on. This kind of looks like this one was almost resolved via the agenda. I saw some language in there I hadn't seen before. But I think the first part, it was unclear to us in the zoning determination letter about whether we were, whether the zoning officer was saying that accessory parking is permitted in this zoning district. So I think we wanted to start with that point and clarify it. Unfortunately, under the accessory uses section, it doesn't specifically list parking lots, but it does allow accessory buildings and structures. And then if you dive into definitions for those, the definition of structure does include parking lots. And the definition of accessory structure, while it does not list parking lots specifically, it does give a list of things that says includes but not limited to, but it essentially is a subordinate structure detached from, but located on the same lot as the principal structure, which this facility, we argue, meets those definitions. So that's the first part. We just kind of wanted clarity, accessory parking is permitted in the R20 district. And then the second piece is about, I think this comes down to whether or not the merging of the lots and having this single lot that spans zoning districts and a municipal, municipal boundary still counts as a single lot, right? Because the parking facility is on one side of the municipal boundary, and the office, medical office use is on the other side of the municipal boundary. But we are proposing to merge those two lots together, so it is one lot. So I think there was just lack of clarity in the code. There's this section 210-16D that stated where a lot is divided by one or more zoning district lines. Each portion of said lot and any building or land used established thereon shall comply with the regulations of the district in which it is located. So although the, our argument is although divided by a municipal boundary and zoning district line, the two subject lots will be merged into a single lot of record. The accessory parking facility proposed to be located within the R20 zoning district is a permitted use if you agree with the accessory, that accessory parking is a permitted use and will comply with the dimensional regulations of that zoning district in terms of dimensions and setbacks. And then the primary use, the medical facility, is located in the city of Poughkeepsie in the R2 zoning district. It's existing and approved. And again, these will all be merged onto a single lot. So I think those are the two points. I don't know, Kelly, if you wanted to add anything to that. I think we wanted to start there. We do have some other examples of, of this issue coming up in the town that has been handled where, where it looks to us like accessory parking on a completely different lot was permitted. So, but we'll start with here, I think, with these facts, and then we can pull, we can pull into that other information as necessary.
Yeah, why don't you show me some examples that you think apply?
Okay. I'll pull it up on the table.
So one of the, one of the first ones was one that I was involved with, which was the Cosmos project, which I'm not sure several members of these board were probably on the zoning board when we were before the city and the town for that project. And so that project is located in both the city and the town of Poughkeepsie, and it was treated as one parcel, one lot of record with respect to the zoning and the bulk requirements. So that's an example where consolidation of lot into one deed, one lot in two municipal boundaries and two different zoning districts. So the other example, I think, is 33 Arlington.
Yeah, I just wanted to pull because I wanted the language from the resolution. So this is a parcel, right? So right here, this one that is highlighted is in the, I think it's...
You have to switch the screen.
Oh. Okay, perfect, thank you. I'm just trying to find the zoning district for this other one.
So this, this is 33 Arlington Avenue. This is the broadly, I guess, people would call it kind of the Tinkelman project. And so you had an existing improved property that had an existing building that was short parking, and they utilized a parcel that was not adjacent. So it wasn't adjacent to the property. It was on the other side of the street in the R20 zoning district. And I believe this board ended up rendering an area variance for that particular application because that didn't meet the strict definition of the lot being adjacent. So this was a similar scenario, but treated with the issuance of a variance. But the point was, is that that accessory parking was permitted on that separate parcel.
Yeah, and so, yeah, like, I think like Kelly's saying, it's not the same exact situation. But I think what we're pulling from this is an area variance was required to allow them on two separate lots, right? The accessory parking on a lot separate from the primary use. If that was a step required for that, I think what we're, what we're kind of trying to, the point we're trying to get to is if they are on the same lot, then that variance would not be required because the, the variance was specifically provided for accessory parking on a separate lot. Ours is, will be on the same lot, so not the exact same situation, but relevant.
And in fact, one step further is in 21092, which is your off-street parking and loading, where it talks about where parking needs to be located. It specifically states that off-street parking and loading spaces required for structures, which again, structures in your definition include parking lots, or land uses on two or more adjacent lots may be provided in a single common facility or one or more of said lots. And so that's the, that's the intent. Obviously, it's in your code. It's intended for that to occur. And that's exactly what we're providing, is one centralized site plan. Again, similar to the Cosmos project, one centralized site plan, one lot, albeit in two different districts because it's in two different municipalities, but one lot.
Go back. And that's what we have. I'll go back to the consolidation plan, and I think the one other point. It's just not catching up.
Yeah, caught up.
Is they will, they will function as, you know, I think as you are passing by this, you will see this as a facility immediately adjacent to the building. And I think to most folks, this will look exactly like a parking facility accessory to that existing building. They will utilize, you know, in, in pulling in and parking in this facility, they will utilize the municipal sidewalk to walk and access the building. We are looking at kind of creating pathways and stuff, but because of the proximity to it, I think this will present like any other facility.
And where are you with the consolidation?
So the lots are currently in multi-ownership, so our, our client is a contract vendee. So we won't be able to merge those lots until this plan is moving forward and there's approvals, and that will be the time that they will become the owner and will merge the lots. Right now, there's two different owners. So we can't, we can't merge them at this moment. And they're not, we won't be merging them unless the facility can move forward.
And I think that's, it's a good question, Mr. Chairman, because what we're looking for is some clarification on this matter. And so I think that having this letter go one step further and say, well, alternatively, if you were to consolidate the lots, then it would meet the definition of the code, and that's, that's really that dialogue that we're looking for so that we can move forward. We don't want to go down this path and go through, you know, the planning board process in two municipalities and bear that expense, not knowing what the direction of, you know, this board would be.
Do you have to go before both boards?
Yes.
Okay.
I don't know if that's actually... The city of Poughkeepsie, we don't see any approvals required in the city of Poughkeepsie, but as a courtesy, we would keep them informed of the project moving forward. But there's no specific improvements on the city lot.
For the consolidation, you had to go in front of both boards?
Consolidate, yeah. Well, we just would need to change ownership, so it's common ownership, and then we could handle that through a lot consolidation plan filed with the county. I think the, the answer to your question is it's ministerial.
Thank you. Lisa, you have any comments?
I don't disagree that it would be a ministerial change to, for them to consolidate once the property were in common ownership. And obviously, they can't do it until they own the property, so, no. I don't disagree with anything that they've said about the ownership and the potential merging.
Okay. Christine, any questions?
No questions.
All right.
I just hate to see another piece of property dug up and made a parking lot. Have you considered, seeing if they could rent parking spaces across the street?
It's, it's actually a good point, and they do, and they currently do rent some parking spaces across the street. But for purposes of the development of that parcel across the street, which is the Palistiner, I think that that opportunity is limited, and they're trying to get control, so long-term control of another parcel, you know, this adjacent parcel for their employees. And so this particular medical office building is trying to decide if they're going to stay in the area or not. This is a critical component for them to stay. So they need to add additional parking. And, and I agree with you about making another parking lot, but this parcel is essentially, you know, it's really undevelopable for any other purpose. So I look at it as if it can keep a business here. You know, of course, we would before the planning board for landscaping and, and so forth, lighting. But if we can keep a business here, that's kind of the critical factor.
Even if this is granted, there's no guarantee that the business will stay. If they get too big for this lot, they'll move anyway.
Sure, but I think what it does is it provides the opportunity for them to stay. I mean, they've, they've been here for a long time, so we could certainly provide you with some letter from them, you know, about their intent. But yes, it's the same with any project.
So there's a lot of this left undeveloped.
Yes, correct.
Right? Because you're just going to have that little small piece.
Correct.
And you're looking at, what did you say, 20, 20 spots for parking?
Twenty-two, yes, correct.
Okay. What happens to the rest of the parcel?
It remains at this point undeveloped, and I would say it's largely undeveloped. So if you were to do a site visit, you know, there's rock outcrops, it's pretty steep slopes over there. I don't know if there's some other potential viable use for that portion of the property. There's also billboard signs on there now, and they're, you know, they're essentially grandfathered in until there's any modification to them. So at this point, the balance of the site is undeveloped. There's no intended, you know, future development, but that doesn't preclude that someone might want to do something later. The property is divided by this kind of unusual paper street.
Adams Street, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
So for those of us, including myself, who have dealt with paper streets in the town, I know Mike can opine on this, they sound easy, like, oh, it's easy, you can just extend the street down. They're very complicated. Lisa was probably involved in the one that I was involved in. So thinking about that ever being a street is probably unlikely.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Larry?
No questions.
Tony?
So just want to make sure I understand, even if this was granted, there's no guarantee it's moving forward. You're just looking for the possibility to move forward on it with this variant?
Yeah, this is really the step to be able to get us to appear before the planning board and start that process.
But, I mean, there's every intention. They, yeah, they just, they're not going to pull the trigger on purchasing the property unless they know they can actually use it for their intended use. So, but I mean, the intent to move forward is fully there.
And you said the billboards are grandfathered in by changing, maybe it's a Chrissy question, by changing anything with the, with this? Does that take...
Personally, I don't believe that to be true. I think they need to be removed as part of 210119.
So if the, if this moved forward and the billboards were needed to be changed, then you'd be okay with that?
At, at the moment, we don't have that in front of us, so I think the application that's before us is just for the parking. We would have to work with Chrissy and decide, you know, whether or not that's, that's a decision moving forward. moving forward. We'd have to present it to the owners and see what their position is on that.
That's fair, thank you.
No questions. Tony?
Just to follow up on the billboard aspect again, you mentioned that they're grandfathered in, but who actually owns the billboards themselves, the owner of the property? They lease them to the sign company?
The owner of the property is the sign company.
The owner of the property is...
Is the sign company, correct.
Okay.
Oh, all right.
That's, okay. Didn't see that one. Okay, that's all I got.
All right. Anyone for the public who wishes to comment on this application? Why don't you step up? You can grab the microphone.
One of these guys can move over.
All right, why don't you state your name?
Sharon Hayes. Do you swear or affirm that...
Hang on.
Oh, sorry.
Gary Calcagni.
Hi. Do you both swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge? Yeah.
All right, what comments do you have?
I don't know if there was a prior planning board hearing on this or not, but this is the first notification.
So this is an interpretation of a decision that the zoning administrator made that a particular lot, just a parking lot, would not be permitted.
She...
Okay.
She said, what's your...
Eight Adams Street.
Eight Adams, just so you know where it is.
My property, it butts that property.
Yes, right at the top of the hill.
And I was just concerned with some of the other things that may be in a planning board hearing.
Correct. So if there were, if we were to find that this was permissible, if they consolidate the lots, then it would go before the planning board? And then if you had comments about that, that would be the place for that. Here is just an interpretation about whether the zoning administrator has correctly interpreted the zoning code based upon the facts that are in front of us.
All right. So then I still have an opportunity in the future to...
Yeah, the site plan itself would have to be evaluated by the planning board, there would be a whole review process, there would be another public hearing, you would be notified as a neighboring property.
Okay.
So there would be opportunities to comment on the specific, you know, details of the layout and all of those kinds of things, if those are what your concerns are.
Yeah, that's what, I hadn't heard anything, I'm like, did I miss something?
That is not what this is about.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Well, thank you.
Never mind.
Okay, is there anyone else? Anyone on Zoom? All right, I don't see anyone, so I'll move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Any discussion? All those who favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Then that motion carries. That brings us to item number eight. So I'm going to hear from that application.
Good evening. I'm on Zoom.
Okay. Would you state your name?
Oh, good evening, everyone. My name is Stephen Burns. I'm a representative of Burns and Engineering Services, and I represent the applicant, Beacon Residential.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
Yes.
All right, why don't you describe your application?
The application is to rezone a parcel located at 297 Violet Avenue in the town of Poughkeepsie. The location is directly north of Schmeling Glass and on the opposite side of the road from the entrance to the New York State DOT. The parcel had an existing dilapidated house some years ago that was taken down by the applicant when they first bought the property. And at the time, they had also gone through and had this rezoning all approved, and it's just, they got a building permit and just never did anything, never really got anywhere with it before the approvals expired. So it was the same, it was the same proposal at the time to rezone the parcel from R-20 to RM, which is residential multifamily, and build a four-family dwelling on it with the associated parking and everything associated with the four-family. In order to do that, at the time, we needed three variances. One is, one was an impervious surface coverage variance. The other one was the density that's required is 72, 7,7,260 square feet per dwelling unit for the four dwelling units. We would require 29,040 square feet of land, when we only have 19,384 square feet of land. So we need a variance, a variance of essentially 9,656 square feet. Also, there's a variance is required to park within four feet of the property line, which is, the parking areas are required to be 20, 20 feet from the property line. And the fourth variance, which is actually new to this application, is refuse enclosures need to be located 50 feet from a residential district or residential building. Schmeling Glass is in a residential district, so the refuse enclosure is about a foot off of the property line next to Schmeling Glass, so we will need a variance for 49 feet for our refuse enclosure. The only real changes that we made to the project from the last rendition of it is we changed a little bit the highway entrance because the DOT standards have changed a little bit, and so have the building codes. So we widened up the entrance to 22 feet in order to, in order to allow for a fire truck to get in on the site. We can... Sorry. If I could just share my screen here. We can see this is, this is the area map, the area map down at the bottom of the screen here. There's a mobile home park to the west, Schmeling Glass to the south right here, and this is New York State DOT. On the north side of our parcel, there's also an existing multifamily house as well. This is, this is the site build-out. So this is the proposed building in the center of the site. The parking is all to the rear of the site. There's the existing multifamily on the north parcel, and this is, this is the Schmeling Glass building. It kind of wraps around the back, the back corner of our parcel. The refuse enclosure in question is right in this area here. There is a fence between the building and the refuse enclosure as well that's existing. The parking area that needs the variance, it needs a variance along the back property line here, and also some overflow parking over in this area is five feet away from the property line. As you can see, this, the entrance was narrower at a time and opened up when it got to the, when it got to Violet Avenue, but at this time, it's, it's been kept at 20 feet up until just about the front of the building in order for a fire truck to get into the property. We've gone through and actually modeled the, modeled the movements of a fire truck getting into the property, getting in and out of the property from both directions at the request of the fire department. We've also gone through and shown the, shown some fire safety things, like the existing hydrant and the distance between the existing hydrant and the backside of the building so that they know whether, whether it will be in compliance with the building code. The building code also, or the building will also be equipped with a residential sprinkler I think that, I think that covers most of it. If you have, does anybody have any questions?
You're currently in front of the town board for the zoning change? Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, there's a public hearing scheduled for, I believe it's July 10th, and this board can't vote on the variances tonight because until the zoning is changed to RM, these variances wouldn't, aren't necessarily the variances that they would need.
Okay. So the denial is based upon it being in the RM district?
Correct.
Okay. Christine, any questions?
No questions.
All right.
We've passed these in the past.
Yeah, this is, this is, I think, this project has been around since about 2015, and I think this is the third restart. But I actually spoke to the owner, and he is, intends to build it this time. I mean, last time was COVID, in fairness, you know, so, right, so, you know.
But nothing significant has changed.
Nothing really has changed other, as Steve pointed out, the entrance is a little bit wide, but that's it, yeah.
No questions, thank you, no questions.
Phyllis?
The traffic flow, you explained the traffic flow in, it's only one in and out in terms of people entering the complex, parking and leaving? Is that right? There won't be anybody driving on the other side of the building between the multifamily that's already existing?
Oh, it's, it's one way, one access road in, one access road out. The access road, it is narrower, narrowest point, I believe, next down to 15 feet, but that's only for a short, a very short portion, it's probably about 45 feet long. And it's on both sides of that, it's, there's adequate space, I believe, to, for two vehicles to get next to each, get by each other.
This has been in front of the planning board. They actually had to redo the seeker determination, which they did. I forget when that was, it was like a month or two ago, right?
Yes, we have a new negative deck, there was, there was at the April planning board meeting.
And if I could just ask, there'll be landscaping for the undeveloped part of the project? You know, there'll be grass, some trees?
Yes. There's, I believe there's some pine trees up front, there's fencing and some trees along the back property line here, and actually, there's, along the north property line is all an existing six-foot stockade fence.
Thank you, no further questions.
Larry?
No questions.
Tony?
No questions.
No questions?
Tony?
No questions.
Anyone for the public who wishes to comment on this application? All right, based upon, based upon the fact that we can't vote on this, I move to adjourn this to the July 8th meeting.
Second.
I was going to, since the public hearing won't happen until July 10th, my recommendation was to go to the August meeting, August 12th is the date.
Can I amend my motion to adjourn this to the August 12th meeting?
Second.
Any further discussion? Anyone can make more corrections? All those who favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Actually, I just move for a five-minute recess.
Thank you.
Any discussion? All those who favor, signify by aye. If that passes, we'll come back at 7:25. At 7:25, we're back in session. At 7:25, we're back in session. Why don't we do, um, Rochdale Road? Number five. So, there's two variances here. One for, it's really section, uh, 210, 135. Because it's a non-conforming lot, addition of the deck makes it increasingly non-conforming. Well, what do you think about the deck? Although it's, encroaches into the rear lot line, it's, it's lesser than encroaching where the regular houses.
There's nothing behind them anyways.
What's that?
It's all woods behind them, wasn't it? All woods?
Yeah. So, anybody have any concerns about this?
No problem.
All right, then let me make these findings. Uh, whether an undesirable change will reduce in the character of the neighborhood or detriment to nearby properties will be created by the granting of a variance. Um, although there's, this is consistent with the style of the neighborhood and similar, um, residences and lots. Whether the benefits offered by the applicant can be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than area variance, based upon the size of the lot and the location of the house, it's impossible to do, to do anything else without an area variance. Whether it's, variance is substantial, um, it's not particularly mathematically substantial in light of the fact that it has less of an encroaching into the rear lot line than the principal residence, it's really insubstantial. Whether the proposed variance will have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions of the neighborhood or district, there's no evidence that it will have any impact on the, on the physical or environmental, um, conditions of the, of the neighborhood. And whether it's, uh, self-created, it certainly was, but that's not a reason to deny this application, and I would offer those findings. Christine, do you mind making this motion?
Sure. I move that the board approved the request for an area variance set forth in item number five. This decision is based on a review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearing, and results of site visits by board members. In approving this variance, the board adopts the findings as set forth by the chair, so move.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Libby, you're not voting?
No.
Okay. Uh, any, any opposed? That motion carries 7-0. And, so why don't we do... Who's, who's Brian?
Brian is from the Beacon, oh wait, no.
Ryan Lang?
That was Steve.
Yes.
It's number six.
Brian Lang.
Brian Lang.
Oh, yeah, yeah, six.
Six, okay. That's Seven Sherwood Drive?
Yes.
Okay, so, um, that was, just to legitimize an existing deck, it's been there 30 years? Then let me make these findings. Whether an undesirable change would reduce in the character of the neighborhood. Um, it's existed there for at least 30 years, and so it won't have any impact or change in any part of the neighborhood. Whether the benefits offered by the applicant can be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than an area variance. Um, this is the only way to, um, for the applicant to accomplish his goal. Whether it's substantial, um, it's not particularly substantial and, and since it's been there for so long, it's really, the impact is minimal. Uh, there's no evidence that will have an impact on the physical and environmental conditions of the neighborhood, and while it certainly was self-created, that's not a reason to deny the application, and I would offer those findings. Art, do you mind making this motion?
No. I'm, I move that the board approved the request for an area variance set forth in item six. This decision is based on a review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearing, and results of site visits by board members. In approving this variance, the board adopts the findings as set forth by the chair.
Second.
All right, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. It brings us to, I remember, seven, 231 North Road. So, in, in light of the fact, um, that they intend to consolidate the lots, does everyone agree that that would then make the parking lot an accessory use rather than a principal use? So I think the zoning administrator's position was, a lot by itself, a parking lot, just building a parking lot on a lot by itself was impermissible, but the use was not allowed. But the applicant intends to consolidate it, and it just make one lot so that the parking lot would be an accessory use to the primary business. Does everyone agree with that? Yes. Zed?
I, I just wanted to mention that Cosmos across the street, um, parking lots are an allowed accessory use in the OR.
Say that again?
Parking lots are an allowed accessory use in the OR, and that's across the street, that's what Cosmos did.
Okay, R or R not?
They are in the OR.
Okay.
And they are allowed as an accessory use.
Okay. So, I would offer that, uh, we may define that condition on the consolidation of the lot that a parking lot would be considered an accessory use. Is that, is that acceptable, Lisa?
Um, yeah, it's acceptable for... Yeah, so, oh.
First of all, is that correct?
That was far enough for what the applicant is seeking. Um, I think, so, that by the fact that it's an accessory use, it would then, because it's one lot, it would be permitted and no further variance would be required for the use, right? It would be an allowed accessory use, right?
We're gonna allow parking lots in all our 20 zones?
What did you say, Chris?
So we're gonna allow parking lots in our 20 zones as an accessory use?
So you're, you're saying that the parking lots are not an, uh, allowed accessory use in the R20?
Correct.
Right.
They're not a specifically enumerated accessory use, but every use in every district requires parking.
I don't consider parking as a use, I consider it as a requirement.
Well, what if I say that, that it's, it would not be, if the lots are consolid, if it's a consolidated lot, it would not, a parking lot would not be a primary use?
Same thing.
Well, it's...
If parking lots were an accessory use, they would have to meet the setbacks. I, I consider parking a requirement as part of a use.
Okay, so, without regard to whether they need any area variances for the site plan, this would allow the, the project to go forward?
Uh, yeah, I would just have to be clear on, on what, what the interpretation that you're, um, upheld, holding is because, um, like I just, going forward.
Well, tell, tell me this, let's say it was one, it was, it was one lot and the business wanted to, build a, a parking lot.
Yeah.
Would they need variances? Would it be, would it be an allowed use? I mean, they might still need variances for setbacks and that number.
I mean, no, but...
Would not be an allowed use?
It would be an, I mean, it would be an allowed use if they needed more parking. Yeah, if it was on one lot in the town, the thing that makes this unique is that it's...
Right, it's part of the city and part of the town.
Yep.
If, if the entire lot was in the R20, if there was an existing business in the R20 zone, would they be allowed to put in a, a parking lot, an additional parking lot?
It'd be an expansion of a non-conforming use.
It would be what?
Expansion of a non-conforming use.
Even if the building wasn't expanded?
I don't know, I'd, I'd have to look at a similar situation. I know that Cosmos was different because it was in an OR. I know that Neptune Road had a parking lot, and then they subdivided, and now that lot is used for rentals.
The OR is the only district that has accessory parking, or something I've been able to find in my last five minutes anyway, quickly, but that lists it as a specific accessory use. All the other, like, any commercial district or whatever, I think, just, it's assumed that that's, it's part of an accessory structure.
I assume that it's part of the requirement.
Right.
Not a use.
If we found simply, if we found just that if the lots are consolidated, that a parking lot is not a prin, principal use? Does that change anybody's position? But would that allow them to go before planning? Which may or may not require some additional area variances?
I'm not understanding.
So I can see you're, you're concerned about calling it an accessory use, because that may, that changes, that may change something. But so, but you've decided that it's a principal use, a parking lot as a principal use is not allowed in the R20 zone? So, if we just find that on this, on this consolidated lot, it's no longer, the parking lot is not a principal use? Because it wouldn't be in any other zone, right? I mean, on any others, in any other zone, any other zone, on one lot.
Can you make a condition of the interpretation? Is that a thing?
What about if the board were to find that once merged, the parking lot would be on the same lot as a principal use, despite the municipal boundary and different zoning district, making it compliant with the R20 regulations and 21012C?
Okay, so that's kind of like a condition of the interpretation? So this wouldn't be allowed to happen in another situation?
Every request for an interpretation is based on its facts. So, you know, if the board had another request of a similar nature, that they would take this into account, but in the same way that, you know, Cosmos is slightly different and 133 Arlington is slightly different, each one stands on its own facts.
Okay.
All right, then I move that, uh, the board find that.
Want to read that again, Lisa? Did you have it written down, I hope?
Sure, it's actually in the, um, the last paragraph on page one of the memo circulated to the board. So, um, the, the zoning board of appeals would find that once merged, the parking lot would then be on the same lot as the principal use, despite the municipal boundary and different zoning district, making it compliant with the R20 regulations and section 21012C of the town code.
Paul? So move. Paul? Yes?
Is there any space to do anything about the billboards?
So I think...
A separate, um, potential enforcement issue with the town that the town will investigate. So, I wouldn't, I don't think I would tie it into this, um...
It doesn't have anything...
Legally, they're separate issues.
We're certainly interested in figuring out a way to do that. If we can.
Was there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Then that motion carries. Oh, I'm sorry, one, one opposed?
Yes.
So it's six, one. So that brings us up to number four. Four points. We got? I can't hear you.
No, I didn't know if she had, if we had to go through this, the reading of the, uh, testimony here, that we approved.
You're reading a testimony?
Yeah. You know, we always read about passing or denying.
For the interpretation.
So I said we don't need to do it.
Third line, that's it. All right, that brings us to item number four, 1117 Maris Drive. This is items one and four, for the freestanding sign. So, the applicant proposes to remove the three signs that are there. And let me make sure, and put up two freestanding signs. I'm pretty sure the county thought this was a matter of local concern. Nope.
I have, if you need me to, uh, pulling it up, hold on.
Oh, yeah, so they wanted it to be reimagined as code compliant plaza signs without tenant panels. I find the variance for freestanding sign locations to be a matter of local concern. So they recommended denial of the freestanding sign size. So, let's see. So anybody have any problems with replacing the three signs with two freestanding signs?
They said they're gonna take down the, the three existing ones?
Mm-hmm. They replaced the two.
Replace them with the two that they identified.
Right. So the county recommended against the increase in size, though.
We didn't get, um, they did talk about the, the implications of a code compliance sign, right? But they didn't show us any images of a code compliance sign. Well, they, they did, but they didn't show, but they didn't show us, like, what it would look like in terms of, could you read it from?
I'm sure you can.
A location.
I think that Little Plaza is, is more of a destination than they, you know, that whole G whiz, there's a gas station, I think. I mean, it might smell like Maris. The people that live in the areas.
Yeah.
The average person coming down Route 9 has the choice of many, many gas stations. They're a lot easier to get you to have, just to...
We're talking about the two monument-style signs, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Correct.
I think they, they seem to have done a lot of work to try to make them as small as possible.
Yeah, but each of the shops, businesses have their own sign on the wall. Not, not very far from the freestanding sign.
Fifty feet, fifty square feet, is that what he said?
That's allowed, right? Is that, Chris, is that correct? They can have up to 50 square feet for each, is the face?
Um, I was looking at that before, and I think it's the wall of the business.
Right, it's based on?
So I would calculate the wall of the actual business, not the entire wall of the facade.
Exactly.
Yeah.
For example, the credit union is massive. I mean, that overpowers that whole, face of that, whole part of the building.
Yeah, I would have to look and see how they were ever allowed, but I, moving forward, I would say it would be, have to be, you know, based on the, the calculation of the face of the building, yeah, 25% of that, or face of the business.
Each business, right, and...
So would each business have to come back in for their signage?
If they want one bigger than...
If it exceeded 25%.
And would that mean that some have awnings of the awnings? I think they indicated that the awnings were gonna come down, correct? Some have their names on the awnings as well. So wouldn't that be duplicate signage?
I believe they said the awnings were being removed.
That's what I thought too, but can we be sure?
So the question that we force is about the free standing signs, right? So, do we...
I like the smaller ones.
I mean, the code compliance sign was still...
Pretty big.
Pretty big, it's not, it's not a small sign by any means.
There's a 40 mile an hour zone there. Even though most people do 40, it's a 40 mile an hour zone.
But there's lights right there.
There are. So, I think, personally, I think the smaller signs would be more sufficient.
Okay. So, we would grant the two free standing signs, but deny an increase in size?
The board, last month, granted the location for the two free standing signs.
Yeah.
So the only thing that's before the board tonight is the size of the signs. And keep in mind that the applicant wanted the gas information on one and not on the other.
Right.
So then we would deny one A and B? Well, any, well, is there anyone who would be for the increase in the size of the monument signs? All right, then that brings us to number four, lighting, which, again, the county was against. So that, I think the applicant explained that the ATM required this increase in lighting, which exceeds what the code says. I think we conditioned that, that the lighting is, if we granted it, that it's conditioned on the ATM being there? That it's acceptable? Anybody have any concerns about that?
The lighting that they're proposing on a separate pole?
Yes, I think that's the only one that...
Yeah, that's the only one we're looking for, right?
Yeah.
Condition upon the existence of the ATM.
Yeah.
If somebody got rid of the ATM, they would have to do, like, take the...
Yeah, if it's in compliance.
Which could be as simple as changing the fixture, I mean, they might still keep the pole there, but they, they would, you know, make some other adjustment to it.
So, I was looking at what the, what the county said and they... And they're saying that if we, if we grant, grant a variance that the no, no measurement within the area higher than five foot, is that what the county is saying?
That's what the county said, but that, I think the applicant described that he can't comply with the state law about the ATM with that condition.
Okay, so, if that's the case and if we're inclined to go along with the applicant, then we need a super majority?
Correct.
To override the county recommendation.
So five. We need five votes. Anybody have a problem?
Can I, can I ask you a question about the signs again?
Yeah.
So, the monuments, everybody's okay with, but the size of the actual...
The whole sign.
The whole sign.
Not the panels.
The whole thing?
The whole sign.
The one closest to Route 9. For both of them.
Both of them.
But we want it to be the one sized by the cleaner, which is the smaller of the two.
So both signs exceed, both sides, both signs are big, are big.
But we want to go with this.
They can...
Make them code compliant.
They can do whatever they want, someone wants their fifty square feet.
Yeah.
Unless you want to grant them a bigger sign.
So when those go up, the other three come down at the same time.
We conditioned that when we granted the free, the free standing signs, Lisa?
That's a good question. I don't, I'd have to look at my notes from last time.
I don't think the applicant would leave them up anyway, but...
Right, I, yeah, they're, well, they're not on their property, so I think they are obligated to take them down, but I don't recall whether we actually did that as a condition.
Did they just clarify what they said they would do anyway, right? If we made it a condition?
Well, right now, we're gonna probably deny the increase in size, so we can't make a condition.
Well, the condition of the lighting is what I meant.
About the ATM?
Yeah.
Yeah.
But the, right, what you're saying is on the signs, you want to condition the approval of the two monument signs?
We already approved the monument signs last month.
So then, so then the other, only question is the size of the signs, right?
Correct.
That's all we can do.
Right. And so it looks like most people aren't interested in increasing the size, granting the variance for the sign's size.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I could maybe do that, just want to be sure we're working, okay?
And Christine, did your question get answered?
I think so, yeah.
What was your question?
The size of the signs.
Okay, yeah, just the, the whole monument sign.
The whole monument sign, if everybody wants it a little bit smaller, or, or just to deny the increase in size.
It would need code, it would have to need code.
Both of them.
Yeah.
Okay.
And, let's see. So, there are, there are staff findings.
I think they would support either of those, both of those actions. Because for the lighting one, we were really just looking for them to answer more questions and help us understand why there are no alternatives. And I think, in this case, they, they did a pretty thorough job showing that.
And is the lighting one, that's an unlisted action?
Yeah.
Okay.
So we'd have to do secret.
So why don't we do?
Which one first?
Number one first.
Okay. So that one, we don't have to do secret on, because it's not...
So, all right, you want to make a motion to deny? Sorry, sorry.
Under the bus.
So you're gonna make a motion to deny?
To deny.
Item number one.
On A and B.
On applicant, or number four, so...
Okay. I move that the board deny the request for an area variance set forth in item number four, Part One, A and B. This decision is based on review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearing and results of site visit by board members. Yeah, no, yes. In approving this, denying, in denying this variance, the board adopts the findings as set forth in the staff report, so moved.
Second it.
Any discussion? This is a motion to deny the request for an increase in size of the monument signs.
No, she just did the one for the lighting, didn't she, number four? Yeah, no, 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 I did the sign.
Agenda number four, agenda, item number four. Request one A and B.
Okay.
What she said?
I'm, I'm looking at this.
All right, so just, just so everyone's clear, this is a motion to deny the request for the increase in size of the monument signs. So, a vote, an "aye" vote would be to deny the request for the increase in size of the monument signs. All, all those in favor of denying the request for the increase in size of the monument sign, say "aye."
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Okay, then that motion carries. Now regarding agenda item four, request number four for lighting, I move that the ZVA determine that this is an unlisted action appropriate for uncoordinated review and declare itself to be deleted. Second, any discussion? All those in favor, signify by "aye."
Aye.
Are there any opposed? That motion carries. And further, I move that the ZVA determine that the action will not have a significant adverse effect on the environment for the reasons set forth in the determination of nonsignificance for this action.
Second.
All those, any discussion? All those in favor, signify by "aye."
Aye.
Are there any opposed? That motion carries. In that case, I move to approve the request set forth in agenda item number four, request number four. This motion is based upon a review of the application, review of testimony provided, staff of site visits and the staff report, so moved.
Wait, didn't you want to make that conditioned upon?
With the following condition. That that lighting be, that the lighting approval be conditioned upon the need for that of the, of requiring, requirements due to the ATM, the location of the ATM. So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, signify by "aye."
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Then that motion carries. Okay, that brings us to the end of our agenda. There is a request by the planning board to be deleted and seen on the Lucas Grove Crossings, South Road, proposing a 2.68 acre for development and a 32 unit multifamily development in four buildings, eight units per building and associated parking and second improvements.
This one, I believe, we've also seen before, it's really, yes.
It's by the Holiday Inn there?
That's right, by the Holiday Inn, exactly, across the street, basically, from Lucas Grove. And it's, I don't, I don't think they ever actually...
In the back, there were the house per...
Yes, where the house per, exactly, yeah.
Came up years ago, didn't it?
Was that?
Yes. Was never quite years ago.
Yeah, quite a few years ago, they went away also around COVID time and they're coming back.
All right, so, so moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, signify by "aye."
Aye.
Are there any opposed? That motion carries, and then I move to adjourn. Any discussion? All those in favor, signify by "aye."
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries, you're adjourned. Thank you very much, everyone.
Good night, everyone.
Good night, Lisa.
Good night, Lisa.